You're digging one?
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to call this regular meeting the Verona Township Council to order. Today is Monday, August seventh at seven o'clock P M. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act compliance?
Notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the township council. Meeting time and date were included in the public meeting notice along with the public internet link, telephone call and information. Said notice in the meeting agenda was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger. At least forty-eight hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and public handouts can be viewed online at veronaj.org/councilmeetings. A public comment period will be held in the order list on the meeting agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland? Councilwoman McGrath?
Here.
Councilman Roman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Here.
Mayor Tamboro?
Here.
We are also present today's township manager, Joe Diarco, and township attorney, Brian Alloy, and municipal clerk, Jen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would all please?
We testify to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, and for the mayor's report, we'll start with Mr. Coltrane.
Good evening.
Please do.
Thursdays or? Motherf*ck. Please come back. With the. All starting. Inverted. So. It's. Is that right? Community or the senior? You can. And my. I am more.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a report that there's audio. Listen, make sure not to mute this. Okay, there you go.
Now I'm muted.
So?
Now it's unmuted, but it was hopefully.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, thanks. Um. On for. The report of the mayor. First, New Jersey lost a. Significant public servant, Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver. Um. Last week, I had the. The opportunity to to meet and have numerous conversations with. Kind of Governor Oliver when she was an assemblywoman and Speaker of the Assembly. Did my work with the State Teachers Union. And while we didn't necessarily agree on everything, she always was open to a conversation. I found her to be a. A leader of fantastic grace and a genuine public servant. So I'd like to ask the council in joining me for a. A brief moment of silence to honor Lieutenant Governor Oliver. Thank you. Thanks. The rest of my report is congratulations and thank yous. First, congratulations to Sue DeWitt, the senior dispatcher and. Records technician for the. From the police department who retired after a long career in Verona. So has been a. A public servant in town for longer than her time there. It's a member of the rescue squad and. As president and captain. Congratulations to Sue and she'll be taking care of her niece. Which is a great retirement gig as far as. Also, congratulations to Lieutenant Chris Shepper and Sergeant Joe Pammy on their promotions within the police department. I unfortunately couldn't attend the. Personal ceremony because I got injured, but I wish them both congratulations. I was thrilled to find out they were the. The individuals being promoted. I actually taught Sergeant Pammy sophomore high school back. I don't know, thirteen years ago, so that's a special one for me as well. Congratulations. Thank you to. Mr. Diarco, Mr. Simone Canaro for providing some significant support. The last couple of weeks helping with president concerns, doing some creative problem solving. I appreciate your. Willingness to to do that. Um. Thanks to the police department and Cedar Grove Police Department on a really phenomenal national night out. What I heard, but I expect that it was it was wonderful and such an important community event. To make sure that we build those relationships with the community. Thank you for our achiever of commerce for hosting our final. Summer concert series in Pacific Center. Our last concert is for Verona residents only at Cool. Check out our website for that. And just a personal thank you to Deputy Mayor McAvoy and. Planning Board Chairwoman Jessica Pearson, Environmental Commission. Chairwoman Jessica Pearson for helping me out when I really needed them this week. And that's my report. Um. Ms. Kurt Diarco?
I will be briefly, with your permission?
I would love that, Mr. Diarco. Thank you.
Just return. The highlights for you, which I will be beginning. Interviews for the deputy manager with the team this week. I do have a number of meetings with the county coming up. As Jay Coltrane indicated, I also have a meeting with the Cedar Grove manager to continue discussions on mutual projects. That would benefit both the communities. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of the subjects that are pending.
And then questions from Sir Diarco. Okay. Back to Mr. Diarco.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. On to Councilmember Trump. W. Mayor. McAvoy, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, I'm going to repeat a couple of things as you also. Has stated, National Night Out, I'd like to thank the Verona and the Cedar Grove Police Departments. For a very nice night, a lot of events this week, and the weather was perfect for all of them. So it was nice to. Get out and see a lot of residents out there from Gulf Townies. Uh. I would also like to congratulate Sue DeWitt for her many years of. Service. Congratulations on her retirement, but also all of her service to the township of Verona. She's. Been on boards with me. And all of her volunteerism for the rescue squad. So congratulations to her. I wish her well. Also, congratulations to Sergeant Pammy and Lieutenant Shepper on their promotions. It's always nice to go. To these promotional ceremonies and. Really. Get to know the background of these individuals and how much time and energy. They put into the classes. To to receive these promotions. The amount of education they receive is just unbelievable when you sit there and just listen to. The chief lists all of their credentials. So it was it was really an honor to go and listen to them, and I thank them for their. Protecting of Verona. I would also. Like to. Offer my condolences to the Oliver family and thank Sheila Oliver. And her family for for all they've given the state of New Jersey and Essex County. And my condolences to that family. I would also like to send my condolences to the Zekelli family. For the passing of Mike Zekelli, who was a longtime resident of Verona. He volunteered. Throughout his entire life in Verona. He spent a lot of time with the Verona senior citizens. He was. Very, very involved with getting Hillwood Terrace built and. Talking to the state and doing the census, census. To move that forward. He was a volunteer on the Board of Adjustments for many, many years. I don't even remember how many years. But it was a good portion of his time in Verona. And he also volunteered a lot of hours at Arleigh Ave Lake Church. So my condolences to the Zekelli family, his passing. He was just a wonderful individual. And a good leader of this township of Verona. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, the Deputy Mayor. Councilman Roman?
You. All of my points have been touched on already tonight, so just thank you for recognizing the passing of Lieutenant Governor. She was a much appreciated public servant. And I will second all the congratulations and thank yous already expressed. Very much.
Thank you. Councilman Grant?
Yes, thank you. I will touch on the same points. I was really thrilled to go to the swearing in of Lieutenant Shepper and Sergeant Pammy. And in addition to what the deputy mayor already mentioned about. Really learning about all of the training and education that these amazing officers have, is I love seeing the family. I love seeing, you know, the family that attends and the youth and vibrancy in the room. So it was really wonderful. I think National Night Out was a tremendous success. Thank you to both the Verona and Cedar Grove Police Departments and the PBAs. And all of the organizations that took time out of their day to come and set up a table. Most of those people were volunteers. Really helping to spread messages like gun safety, health and wellness, drug and alcohol use and prevention. It was really a wonderful night, and the weather could not have been better. And like my colleagues already stated, I think New Jersey really was an icon in the passing of Lieutenant Governor. Sheila Oliver. She truly was a trailblazer. She was the first black woman ever to be the Assembly Speaker and the Lieutenant Governor. She was an example for all women elected leaders throughout the state, and I certainly. Had the pleasure of hearing her speak many times and meeting her. And I do send my condolences, not just to her family. But to her extensive network of family and friends, especially in Essex County. Her funerals arrangements are later this week. They are in Newark. And the members of the public are invited to go, and so I encourage everyone to. Pay their respects directly, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Oliver?
Thank you. I'll keep my remarks brief because so many of my colleagues have spoken eloquently about their recent promotions, as well as the passing of Lieutenant Governor Oliver, so. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. With our custom, we are going to have a. Time for public participation that is not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read the open public participation statements?
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, please. Raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor. If you're dialing in by phone, please press star nine. When you're recognized, please state only your name and township residence for the record. You're not required to provide your street address. However, if you do. Please note that these meetings will be posted on the township's YouTube channel and addresses will not be redacted for any purpose. You'll have four minutes to address the council. After everyone wishing to speak, it's unheard. The council may address your comments and our questions.
Thank you. And this comment section is on any matter. Not limited to the agenda.
Open.
Small arrow, anything? Nothing to say? All right, seeing nobody at home, I'm going to close my comment at this time. And we will move on to. Adoption of ordinances on second reading. Which we have one. Next item on the agenda will be this ordinance in reading. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine into the record?
Mending the code of the township of Verona to repeal Chapter two seventy flood control and damage prevention in its entirety. And adopt a new Chapter two seventy flood control and damage prevention. To adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plain administrator and providing for several building and an effective deed.
Madam Clerk, would somebody please move the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Okay, the motion by Deputy Mayor McAvoy, the second by Councilman Roman. Now it's time for the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Madam Clerk, would you please read the proportion statement for? This hearing.
Well. Anyone wishing to address this item only, raise your virtual hand. You may do so by pressing the raise hand monitor. Button on your monitor, and if you're dialing in by phone, please press star nine. When you're recognized and advised, please state your name for the record. You'll have coordinates to address the council. If everyone wishing to speak is heard, the hearing will be closed. And the council may address your comments. Please be advised that the meetings will be posted on YouTube and addresses will not be redacted. And it is over.
Second, Madam Clerk? Give everybody a minute to jump on if they would like. Seeing no desire for public comment, I will close the public portion at this time. Is there any counseling session?
Thank you. I know discussion per se, but I think just a suggestion for our. Management. I think it's a very complicated ordinance, and I think. A simplified explainer for residents, especially ones that live in the flood zone, near the flood zone. Is probably necessary. This may tie into some of the other work that I believe the administration was considering in terms of. Making things clear with property owners in terms of their responsibilities to clean out certain drains and culverts. I think we can tie this all together, but this is this is a lot, and. I think residents need to understand what changes they can make to their homes or not. And how this may impact future renovation plans. So it's just a suggestion for our management.
We'll do that.
That's a great point, yes. The source would be.
Would be great.
Would be formal. Any other council discussion? Okay. Hearing gone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-nine passes five zero and will be published according to law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance. Page one on first reading. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of this ordinance?
Mending Chapter one forty vehicles and traffic, Article six, special zones in areas of the code of the township of Verona to regulate parking at two zero eight. Oofield Avenue, known as Everett Field.
Would somebody please give the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Graff. Is there a second? Second, second by Councilman Roman? Or any discussion on this item? None. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor H one will be numbered ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven. Will be published according to the law, and a public hearing will be held on August twenty-first.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to the consent agenda at this time. We have three sets of minutes on the consent agenda. As well as resolution on representatives to the Essex County Community Development. Adult and block grant committee, otherwise known as the CDBG. And we have one resolution authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement with Roseland for street sweeping services. Which is an extension of the current. Everything. There's not a resolution for executive session. Will that be necessary?
No.
No executive session, so. Okay. And we have a report on licenses and permits, correct? Madam Clerk?
Yes, the first and second quarter raffle reports were submitted to the council.
And there's nothing that needs to discuss on those.
No, because I just need to report them, and I apologize for the delay.
Great, great. Thank you. It's always fun to read those. At this point, we are going to have public comments on the consent agenda items only.
Hey, anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the consent agenda items only, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor, or if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine. When you're advised and recognized, please clearly state your name for the record. You'll have four minutes to address the council. And if you do. Give your address, you'd be noted that these meetings will be posted on YouTube, and addresses will not be redacted. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard. The public session will be closed, and the council may address your comments or questions.
The fact of Madam Clerk? So I'm in this open. We know. Public comment. I'm going to close the public comment on. The consent agenda at this time. Is there any council discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I had asked Municipal Clerk. Tune in to make two adjustments on the reorganization meeting minutes. One is just reflecting the three to two vote that the mayor and who got what votes. And then the multicultural committee was not included in the movement and some remixes. So those were two adjustments, and thank you for making.
I've made those to those minutes.
Thank you. Very attention to detail on those. Any other discussion on? The consent agenda from the council? Fair enough. Would somebody like to move these?
So long.
Motion by Deputy Mayor. McAvoy, is there a second? Councilman Roman has been seconding all our motions tonight. He is just in that kind of mood. Thank you. Actually, now we should have discussion in the council. There's a lot of order at home. No further discussion. I'm sorry, would you please?
Councilwoman Holland? Yes, Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor, Resolutions K one, K two will be numbered one fifty-five and one fifty-six.
We do not have an addendum this evening. We do have one item of unfinished business, new business. This is a capital ordinance appropriating eleven thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the repair of the elevator located at Community Center. Mr. Diarco, would you like to give us a little back?
Yeah, that's why I have Chuck here.
The elevator needs.
A small narrow. It's good to see you. Be amusing everybody. How are you?
You're safe.
Tap that.
Is the elevator out of work? Not the elevator? I mean, it feels like we're used for. The attached administration.
Is this, I do have a question. Is this urgent or?
Right there. And this is eligible for capitalization?
Yes.
Extends the life of the elevators and assets ever? Specifically, just humor me? I just know. He's already got. I trust it.
An elevator company.
Get a copy of the order.
I'll be out.
Yeah.
Is it currently out of order? It's still functioning? Thank you. That's an important aspect of accessibility.
Well.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
First, I felt upon them having difficulty hearing this narrow.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. I'll just briefly encapsulate from here. The elevator needs preventative maintenance that is required to extend its life and to keep the safety of the elevator. It can be capitalized at this time because of the. The expected. Length of utility of those repairs. And the elevator is operational at this time. But needs to be upgraded. And I imagine it would be quite a bit more expensive if we waited for it to not be. Functional and ordered repair. Thanks.
Mayor. It wouldn't be on your agenda if the CFO didn't serve a hundred bucks.
Does any council member have additional items of?
I just have one quick of old business we discussed and. Seeing someone in need of. The. The handicap button to open the door coming in the building tonight. I know we discussed it in the past about the community center, trying to get one installed up there. Have we looked into that?
I haven't.
Okay.
A little energy or stores?
Or.
Can you just move it up? Actually, sorry. You run over the wires basically.
That was dark. Yeah, I did. Okay, thank you. Councilman Grant?
Two things on that. One is, I think I had heard maybe we would buy first CB.
We are.
Grants to help offset that cost.
Yeah.
Also, the multicultural inclusion and accessibility advisory committee. Recently completed a walking tour of all of our facilities to look for accessibility. Like they sort of did like an accessibility review, just a layman's review. They're not experts. They'll be writing up their findings and sending a memo to the administration and the council. That may come more.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, but they, one of the council, one of the members, excuse me, the multicultural committee is a wheelchair user. And they were grouped, well, five of them, and they followed the A R P process. A R P has some great resources and suggestions for residents to do a similar walking tour. So I believe they followed that, but that'll all be in their memo. Which should be sent to the council and the poll.
That's great.
So, yeah, yeah, it was, I heard it was a really great, and. And Mr. Waterman ended up following them around and helped them with theirs.
The other. No unfinished business from the council?
Yes, so on this capital ordinance of eleven thousand, do, are you, were you looking for us to introduce? I know normally we don't move a ordinance on introduction unless we feel it's urgent. So are you looking for us to introduce tonight so that it's finalized? If not, we will be.
I. Really. It wasn't urgent as far as I I know. Chuck got the pricing board, and I could wait till the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Wasn't critical. They're trying to avoid. Trying to avoid critical.
Okay, because then its second meeting would be September.
And the council, you're correct, Chuck and the grant firm and myself were working on. Grant application for the excess CDBG funding for the. Senior Center Annex. Building, so we have that. So that grant application is. A priority with the county, and we may be in very timely. For.
It would be nice to make better use of that space. Okay, I'm just open to the public for meetings. If anybody wants to have a meeting, there's a very nice meeting room back there that I used, so. Give us a call if you if you need us. Give us a call if you if you need us. All right. Any other new unfinished business, my colleagues? Okay. No, we're going to move on to public comment. This will be our final public comment. Opportunity. This can be on any item that anybody would like to discuss. The same public comment statement applies. Nobody has changed since the last time we read one. Madam Clerk, please open public comment.
It is open.
Thank you very much. Saying nobody desires of participating in the meeting. I'm going to close public comment at this time. There's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I've heard that Councilman Roman on the side, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Councilwoman McGrath. All those in favor, aye? And if you have phones returning. All right, a standard adjournment at seven thirty two P M. Thank you, everybody. Day two weeks.